Six apart, we're starting the meeting. Mister Barra from the radio, uh, we're going to have to debate this.
United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, for the nation and their God, individual, and liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of fraud. Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes. Ralph Duran.
Here.
Mayor Eli Garcia.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia and Lobos.
Here.
Mayor, we have a court. Item number four, public hearing. Mayor, we have no speakers for public comment. Item number five, excuse absent council members. Item number six, public hearing. Do we have a motion for item number five?
Make a motion to excuse, uh, absent council members.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes. Ralph Duran.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia and Lobos.
Yes.
Item number six, public hearing on ordinance adopting a budget fiscal, a budget for the fiscal year commencing October first, two thousand seventeen, and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Six oh three, public hearing is now open. If anybody would like to say anything at this time, you can come forward. Six oh three, public hearing is now closed. Item number seven, second reading and adoption of an ordinance adopting a budget for the fiscal year commencing October first, two thousand seventeen, and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia and Lobos.
Yes.
Item number eight, public hearing for an ordinance authorizing the assessment and collection of property taxes within the city of Socorro, Texas, and further authorizing the El Paso City Tax Office to perform the actual assessment and collection of property taxes at a rate of point seven seven, point seven two seven five 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 per one hundred dollar value of real property, which consists of a rate of point five three nine three six three per a hundred dollars for maintenance and operations, and a rate of point one eight eight one nine two per hundred dollars for debt service on behalf of the city of Socorro, Texas, for the fiscal year commencing on October first, two thousand seventeen, and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Six oh five, public hearing is now open. Six oh six, public hearing is now closed. Item number nine, second reading and adoption of an ordinance authorizing the assessment and collection of property taxes within the city of Socorro, Texas, and further authorizing the El Paso City Tax Office to perform the actual assessment and collection of property taxes at a rate of point seven two seven five 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 per one hundred dollar value of real property, which consists of a rate of point three nine three six three per one hundred dollar for maintenance and operations, and a rate of point one eight eight, point one nine two per one hundred dollar for debt service on behalf of the city of Socorro, Texas, for the fiscal year commencing on October first, two thousand seventeen, and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Motion to approve. Second.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia and Lobos.
Yes.
Item number ten, public hearing on an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, adopting the amended organizational chart for the city of Socorro, Texas. Six oh seven, public hearing is now open.
The organizational chart, we're just moving the administrative.
Correct, but he told me to say it on both.
So the attorney advised for me to announce it on both, just the administrative assistant is under chief of police, not under the sergeants. The administrative assistant for the police department is under police chief, not under the sergeants, so we just need to move that item.
Six oh eight, public hearing is now closed. Item number eleven, second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, adopting the amended organizational chart for the city of Socorro, Texas.
Motion to approve as read. To include the changes stated by the C manager with the administrative assistants being directly under the chief of police?
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia and Lobos.
Yes.
Item number twelve, public hearing for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro master plan and rezoning of lot one, block one, Triovista School subdivision from A one agricultural to S U one special use zone for a K two twelve school. Six oh nine, public hearing is now open. Six oh nine, public hearing is now closed. Item number thirteen, second reading and adoption for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro master plan and rezoning of law one, block one, Triovista School subdivision from A one agricultural to S U one special use zone for a K two twelve school.
Motion to approve as read.
Mrs. Reyes, you second. Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes, Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia and Lobos.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, public hearing of an ordinance amending chapter thirty-six, streets, sidewalks, and other public places to create a new division for deployment of network nodes in the city right-of-way in Article Two Streets and Right-of-Way to establish guidelines, procedures, and a design manual governing network providers' access to public right-of-way as provided in chapter two eighty-four, Texas Local Government Code. Six ten, public hearing is now open. Six eleven, public hearing is now open. Six eleven, public hearing is now closed. Item number fifteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending chapter thirty-six, streets, sidewalks, and other public places to create a new division for deployment of network nodes in city right-of-way in Article Two Streets and Right-of-Way to establish guidelines, procedures, and a design manual governing, governing network providers' access to public right-of-way as provided in chapter two eighty-four, Texas Local Government Code.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia and Lobos.
Yes.
Item number sixteen, public hearing of the proposed rezoning of tracks two A, two A one, and two A three, block twenty-eight, Socorro Grant from R two, medium density residential, two A one agricultural, for Isma Farm. Six twelve, public hearing is now open. Six thirteen, public hearing is now closed. Item number seventeen, second reading and adoption of the proposed rezoning of tracks two A, two A one, and two A three, block twenty-eight, Socorro Grant from R two, medium density residential, two A one agricultural, for Isma Farm.
Motion to approve.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Before we go on, um, Jim, do we have to read out, can we, can they just say motion to approve, or do we have to read what the motion is? Okay, thank you. Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia and Lobos.
Yes.
Item number eighteen, discussion and action to ratify the tax increase set forth in ordinance adopting a budget for the city of Socorro.
Motion to delete. Item number fifteen. Second.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia and Lobos.
Yes.
Think you forgot, Ms. Reyes.
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action regarding the results of the inspection and investigation of the condition of several properties located on or near Nokoker Road.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we, uh, I provided you a small package. Um, it's gonna show you some of the homes that we went to inspect out there. Um, on the first page that you see, you're gonna see some, some of the homes were marked, some of them are red, some of them are green. What that means is the ones that are marked in green are the homes that we inspected. Those are the homes that are currently occupied by people. People are living in those homes. And, uh, the only one that we did not inspect because he did not want us to go into his house is the one on the far top left, the green dot on the far top left. That's the only one we didn't inspect. Everything else, and we found, uh, through the history of the, the problems that we, uh, the people, the people who live on Coker Road have been having. In September two thousand thirteen, there was a very large flood that destroyed all of those homes that are pinpointed in your map, the one that you see there. What happened after the flood is a very large amount of sand came down from the arroyo and buried their property. Some of those homes were damaged one hundred percent. And after the flood, people, some of the people were relocated. And some of the ones that, uh, still remain on site, they, they cannot afford to buy another house or relocate to a safer place. So this is, uh, how the homes were left after the flooding. Their vehicles were buried in the sand. There was a big mudslide, um, all over their furniture, all of their property was damaged. Um, after the flood, the city or somebody repaired the road. And, um, on the second page of your little package, you're gonna see a little map where we're showing you, uh, what we call a danger zone. That area that you see highlighted in red, two very large arroyos convey into that point. And if you look at the green dots where the people live, they're right in the middle of the, of the danger zone. So we determined that, uh, by living in those homes, there is a very large risk. There might be loss of life. There's health hazards. If you look at the pictures here, this is from the flood of two thousand thirteen where the emergency vehicles were trying to rescue the people. There is no way they can go in there. Once the arroyo comes, they're by themselves, there's even emergency vehicles can't reach them. There's some other people, the entire Coker Road turns into a stream, a big arroyo. Trucks, trailers, tractors, everything was buried in the sand. Semi trucks. Water was inside their homes. It rose up to three or four feet inside their homes. After the inspection that we did four years later, um, some other people who still live there are still trying to restore their homes. Um, but because we had some recent flooding, even this year, uh, the, the amount of rain was not significant. It still doesn't allow them to repair or restore their homes, so those homes are dilapidated and decayed. You could see where the homes are coming apart. There's, uh, all their, still some of the furniture left over that was damaged. The walls. The wood is soft to where the structure is unsafe. There's even portions of the wood that is all decayed that the wood is missing. You could see on the roof right here, all the decayed lumber coming down. This is all their stuff that was damaged during the flooding. There's overgrowth of weeds. There's, uh, trash debris. Tires, toxic waste on the soil because of the damaged vehicles. There is mold. We also found that their water reservoir where they collect their, uh, water, uh, to bathe and to, for rescue purposes, they have some underground storages that get contaminated. As soon as the arroyo comes down, the water goes right into the, their water reservoir. For example, in this house, under this little room that you see here, their water reservoir is underground. This is where they have their, there's, uh, they have their pets, children. Um, even speaking to the residents from the house, from those homes, they have rattlesnakes underneath this little, uh, tank that you see here. This is where they have their water. The plumbing is exposed, it's not protected. There's, uh, faulty wiring. The walls on their homes are cracking. These are the effects of buoyancy from the mudslide that, that came down, shifted their homes a little bit, and it ended up cracking their walls. All of these homes are built on sand soil. They have the gas lines exposed. All this that you see here was buried underneath the sand. The sand was as high as this window. It blocked their back door. You could see the damage, how high the sand was. You could see the amount of decay on the doors. This is their septic tank. As soon as the arroyo comes in, it floods the septic tank and it, it starts pouring out the materials. This is the overgrowth, weeds. This is a fire hazard. As soon as winter comes, all this is gonna dry up. You could see the fiberglass insulation from the ceilings coming down. This is where the, the roof that's decayed on the top, it's, uh, leaking, and you could see the mold on the walls. There's mold everywhere. We detected mildew under belongings, mold on the ceilings, water coming down through their ceilings into their electrical fixtures. Uh, short circuits were detected throughout the house, some of the outlets don't work. Uh, this is the, this is the evidence where the mold is, uh, I provided you some of the pictures, uh, they're attached to your package. And, um, after the flooding from two thousand thirteen, uh, they started moving some of the silt over to the side to try to protect their homes from future flooding. And all they have around the house is these, uh, berms to try to protect them. And you could see the contamination on the soil from the motor oil or vehicle fluids. This, um, mountain that you see here on the side, they had to build this wall to prevent, all this was against the, the house, so they just pushed it over to the side and they started building this. These homes are located in a flood zone. And they are below the grade of the flood level. So every time the arroyo comes, it's gonna go straight into their homes, water is gonna go straight into their homes. You could see the structural damage on the, on the cinder block. Their furniture destroyed, kids. The second home. They also have, uh, where they've been digging out all their belongings because they can't afford another house. They have, they have to remain there. They started repairing the, some of the, the, uh, the damage from the flood, but we couldn't inspect inside the walls, we don't know if there's any mold. You could see where the water rose and they repaired the part that was damaged, so an inspection was not conducted on the walls, we, we don't know what's inside. This house right here, it's, uh, on, hanging by a string, it's about to come down. The resident expressed that you could hear cracking on the walls, and, uh, they're afraid to sleep in the master bedroom because you could hear that the wall, the ceiling is cracking like it's about to come down, you could hear it popping. So all this stuff that you see here, it's inside the living room because they can't go into the bedroom. You could see where the cinder block is cracked. The water damage when it came inside the house. Electrical outlets. Inside this little hole, there's a loose electrical outlet. All of this was underwater. You could see the wires exposed. Uh, the hallway, uh, everything, they just repaired the, the bottom portion that was damaged by the flood, but we were unable to inspect the, the actual studs. This is the master bedroom, uh, they started repairing some of the cracks. But there's the evidence where it's still cracking. The walls are cracking, this is the master bedroom. The windows are sealed. In this home, uh, we detected, uh, sand inside the plumbing. When you open the water fixtures in the sinks, the bathrooms, they're filled with sand. Sand comes out of the water fixtures. This is outside the house. Uh, they also have, uh, all their damaged furniture and stuff. There's the structural damage. And it's on all four, four corners of the house. There's overgrowth, the weeds. This hole underground, this is where they have their water reservoir. As soon as the arroyo comes, it fills with water, so it's contaminated. And now, uh, they even had to repair, uh, restore their, uh, pump system. The plumbing was restored. But there's still extensive amounts of damage. Some of these homes are unfit for human habitation. Uh, the third home. This one also suffered extensive damage inside the house, but it's been repaired, some of it has been repaired. What they did around it, uh, the perimeter, they created this, uh, concrete wall to protect it from future flooding. This is where they restored about two feet of the walls that were damaged by the flooding. about two feet of the walls that were damaged by the flooding. All these homes are below the flood elevation. The other homes that were inspected are, have been abandoned. There's no way people can live in those homes. They're halfway buried under the sand. So we provided you a list of all the violations that we detected. And the only way to restore these homes would be to demolish them and redo them at a higher level to, to keep them above the flood plain. But still, there's no guarantee they're gonna be safe. The reason for that is there's a... This is one of the biggest arroyos that are coming from the county of Paso. These homes, they're located right here. Every time the arroyo comes down, it follows this path. And it locks them in. This is the only ingress they have. Arroyo two comes down, and this is the only way out. They're trapped. Emergency vehicles cannot go in there. The pictures that you just saw, this is the exact location where they were stuck trying to rescue these people. Then Arroyo three, it's a new arroyo that just came in from the middle. So you can see that they're surrounded by floods. It's a very dangerous zone. The entire problem area is this area right here. According to FEMA, this is the actual flood zone. This is the places where people are living. We have some options to present to you that, but we, we still need to get some legal counsel on, on the options that we're gonna present to you. The other vacant homes, they're... Even with the berms that we created, because the, the zone was declared a disaster zone, the city was able to help them with some of the, to improve some of the streets. But the problem there is the soil, it's not even clay, it's sand. The moment the, the arroyo comes down, all this sand is gonna be washed away. And it ends up right in the middle of the, of the drain. The drain is the only thing that's protecting the west part of this area. As soon as the, the arroyo comes down, this drain is gone. This is how it looks today. But even at the slightest rain, you can't go in there anymore. Today, if you have a, a four-wheel drive vehicle, this is the farthest you can go in. Like around this point, from there, you can't go further in.
Joe, can you move the, up above here on the right, right there in the middle? Are those drainage ponds?
These are retention basins that, but they're private property. They belong to the lot. See these lots above the, the hill, they're elongated, and this is where they have their retention basins. But it appears that they're not doing their, their job because that's where the arroyo number three comes from. It's not collecting the water.
Are those lots in Socorro too?
Yes, sir. This is the city limit.
Okay, can we get those people to make sure that no more water comes off of their property?
Yes, we can, but like I said, it, it's not a significant amount of water that we're gonna be catching by. I mean, we, we could ask them to put their part. But the biggest issue are arroyo number one and number two. These are the biggest. And that's something that's out of our control. It's, it's something that it's bigger than us, like the city manager said in the past. It's bigger than us. The county is trying to find a solution together with us. They are trying to improve the, the funding area that they have on this subdivision up here. But it's still a long way, it's, it's still a long way to go. And we're trying to find a solution for these people who are in the middle of the danger zone as soon as possible. So those, those are the pictures that we obtained from those inspections that we did. The other concern that we have is because some of those homes are vacant, we detected that some of the vacant homes are starting to be occupied by unknown people. They're starting to clean up some of the homes. And they're not even the owners. Squatters are taking over. And we wanna take action before it gets worse, especially on those vacant homes. They are damaged beyond repair. They have, they have to come down. See, these are the homes that are unfit for living. This is what's inside of one, one of them. There's, there's no way to restore those homes. Any questions?
Mr. Perez?
Have a staff develop a community or no steps, or does anybody need to be dressed in and executive session?
But we do need legal counsel to guide us in the right direction.
Second. Yes.
Yes. Six thirty-eight, at this time we are going into executive session.